Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll approve agenda or changes to the agenda.
Who changes the business?
Okay, need a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, any conflicts of interest, disclosure, disclosures, or waiver requests?
Moved by Trump, signed by Cole and then...
No, sorry.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side, motion carried.
Sorry, conflict of interest disclosures and waiver requests, are there any?
Should not be.
Okay, all right, so we'll move to action item, which is our COVID-19 update, Safe Return to School Plan. Thanks to everybody who's attending tonight. We, did everybody sign in back there? Okay, sounds good. So I just wanted to set some, the intention for the meeting tonight, tell you what our goals are. The board's goals have always been to keep students and staff safe, keep kids in school as much as possible, and keep the school open, so just with those goals in mind, that's what we'll be referring back to tonight. For the meeting tonight, the board, we're gonna get, all of us will get an update on the current COVID situation within our school, we'll discuss thoughts, options, changes needed, if any, and we'll hold any votes if necessary until after public commentary. Time for public commentary, we'll be at the end. And then, just wanted to let you guys know that the current things, we're gonna talk about current things in place to mitigate spread and other options if needed. That's about it, make sure that we're doing everything we can to manage where we're at, be proactive, so. All right, go ahead.
I gotta stand because I can't sit too long, sorry. Plus, I want people to hear me too, so, yeah, you know, it's been a little bit of a wild ride here, for sure, within school, but I wanted to give you the numbers as of today. So, I'll start with close contacts, today, at the end of the day, high school, we had four that are still remaining in that protocol, we have 15 junior high kids that are remaining in that protocol. The elementary, I think it's fair to point out that due to the nature of an elementary classroom, we track those close contacts a little bit differently, and that's in our Safe Return to School Plan, is that if there is a positive case within the elementary, or a classroom, then that entire section or class becomes a close contact. So, with that said, we have both fifth grade sections that are close contacts, we have both second grade sections that are close contacts, and if I'm wrong, Mr. Fisher, help me.
Yep.
We have one first grade section, that's close contacts, and one kindergarten section, that's close contacts. There's a little weave and ebb and flow with some other kids due to maybe siblings or other situations where there's 16 other kids within the elementary that are considered to be close contacts, and then the total number of staff that we have close contacts is seven.
So... So what was the elementary number?
Excuse me, Jill?
What was the elementary actual number?
So, well, if you wanna add them up, yeah, I don't, just both sections of fifth grade, I don't know, Mr. Fisher...
I can get it for ya.
Can ya?
Yeah, I can total them up.
And I did not do that, so I apologize. But you're gonna be talking essentially 20 kids per section, so 20, 40, 60, 80, 100, 120, plus another 16, 130, with a few odds and ends in there. So I suspect there's probably 140 kids in the elementary considered to be that close contact. With that said, by Monday, because some of these are coming to their end of their quarantine status, so by Monday, if everything stays status quo, which we'll see the ebb and flow, we'll have one high school student left in close contact protocol, we'll have seven junior high students left in close contact protocol, both fifth grade sections would be clear at that point in time. So, we would have both second grade sections still in the protocol, the first grade section in the protocol, and then the kindergarten section still in the protocol, and by the end of the following week, those would be coming off of their close contact status, and then the random kids, we would drop down to 14, and then there would be one adult yet in that status. So, as of today, the positives, the people that are in isolation, still at this point, we have six high school students that are in isolation, two of them are seniors, four of them are sophomores. Junior high, we have two, and they're both seventh graders. Elementary, we have nine positives, there's two in the kindergarten section, there's one in the first grade section, there's two in the second grade sections, I think it's one apiece, if I correct?
Now we're at three.
Three, did you get one, just, yep, okay, so just got one. And then, one in third grade, one positive in third grade, one positive in fourth grade, and then there was two fifth graders, but they're again the opposite section, so one in each section.
And one comes off tomorrow.
One comes off, yep, so elementary, or excuse me, then staff, we have one positive. So, come Monday, out of those 17 positives, 10 of them will be out of that isolation protocol when they come back on Monday, and again, if things stay status quo, then you're looking at seven people within that isolation protocol, from that perspective. So those are, since school started, we've had 30, this is the beginning of the year, we've had 36 positive cases, that's staff and students. Of the 36, five of them have been staff, okay, and you can do the math, then the other ones are students. Since November 18th, when we took off, we've had 34. So within, right before that, Thursday, prior to the volleyball tournament, and then we had the days, we came back two days before the Thanksgiving Day break, you know, that's kind of when things took a jump on us, but since that point in time, we've had 34 students and staff, again, be identified as COVID positive, and as of today, out of those, you're looking at eight, you're looking at 17 people. And again, 10 of those then will be done on, come Monday, so. I'll divert to anything Mr. Fisher or Mr. Norton wanna say about the situation, I guess, in their particular areas, for them to have a chance or an opportunity to do that, and if they don't, that's fine, you know, and we talked about it, but anything to add, gentlemen?
I would say at the high school, junior high level, we have quite a few of the students that have gone through a lot of the testing to get out of the masks early. Those are almost entirely coming back negative, I can't really think of any of those that we were worried about with the contacts that have come back that way. And we have a few that are trying to daily, but most are just, let me get that one after day five, so on day eight I can take it off and go. And so that, so we do have them kind of filtering off throughout, you know, I spent the morning walking around making sure we still had everybody hooked up like they were supposed to be, but, so we're trying to keep track of that as we go through it too, but.
Yeah, and I think that's been a good, the fact that we're getting more people to test, I think, has been a good thing for us to have that peace of mind, or to know if we need kids to go home. What we've seen in the elementary, it hasn't been presenting itself as really things that are really noticeable, as far as something that would be super concerning, you know, it's been in large part a runny nose or a cough, and in fact then, you know, to the point of, I think what we haven't, parents aren't really aware, so they're coming to school because they don't really know. And so that's kind of how it's been presenting itself in the elementary. I don't think it's been a large school spread, I think the holidays and the breaks and family gatherings, that's where, from what we're seeing with the cases we've had so far, that's what I'm noticing are trends to be, so.
I would add to the fact that, and I can't give you an exact number, but the elementary conversation is probably lending itself towards, not necessarily that it's a school-related issue as much as it's a home-related issue, it's a family-related issue. They're calling us, you know, hey, and it's, they may have been in contact with a relative, or it may be the parent in of itself type of deal, so at the elementary end, while the numbers are there, you know, got nine of them that are positive, and to me, the one in, the one in four different sections, you know, that tells me, when I'm analyzing that, I mean, you know, one in that section, just one in that section, just one in that section, and if it was really a school-related issue, I think we'd probably be maybe seeing a little more. Now, the initial spike in the high school, maybe could attribute that a little bit. The highest one class section that we had was, I believe, the sophomores, and there were six of them at one time. So, a little bit different scenario for there, and then the seniors had five at their height, and then I think the freshmen had five at their height, so that's where the numbers are at right now. I guess my perception, to where we started at, you know, back on 18th or the 20th, when we came back to school and to where we're at now, we seem to have weathered the storm. If anything, I would say we're on an even keel, maybe in a downwards tick, just a little bit. I don't think that, I don't feel, I think Mr. Norton and Mr. Fisher and I all agree that we're, the trajectory is not this at this time. So, I guess with that, I'll, anybody got any questions for me, that's what I have for you.
Matt, what do you got for that, you have questions?
I don't have any questions, my thoughts are, is I think the plan that we put in place at the beginning of the year has been what we designed it to do, and I would be in favor of just sticking with where we're at. I think everybody, the staff's doing a good job of keeping track of everything, and as long as we keep following that, I think we'll be okay.
I agree, I don't, I feel like we're in a, I feel like what I really like about it is the testing option, because I think it, even though that's what made our numbers go off, it truly showed us who was positive, so we could remove them, and then they don't get other people sick, so it's better than what we had, you know, before, like even last year, if we would have had that, I think it would have been, looked different. So I like that as an option, I feel confident that the school's doing the right things, and the kids who have been exposed are already in a mask, so it doesn't really make sense to mask everybody when we're already keeping those that are exposed, you know, away from everybody else, I don't know. Agree, guys, do you have anything to add?
I would just say that the testing option, I didn't know where that would go, you know, when we added that back in October. I think as kids became more accustomed, and they started asking some questions, especially the older kids, they're like, okay, what now, can I do that, yeah, you can do that. So essentially, what we would suggest, Mr. Fisher and Mr. Norton and I, through conversation, and bring to you guys, is if there was any one change to that Safe Return to School Plan, we had two dilemma, not, two separate things there, where you could test in days one, two, three, four, and five, and if you came every day and tested, and if it was negative, then you're out of that mask protocol. Knowing that the CDC guidance said in days five through seven, if you tested, had the negative, then on day eight, you could come out of that. Well, our thought is, is let's just, they, if we wanna do that, it's days one through seven, and it's days one through seven, school days. Even though there's a weekend in there, and that's worst-case scenario where you came on a Monday and you started, you tested Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, well, there's five, right? So, you go home and do six and seven, and then you come back Monday, and then we test you one more time, and then there's your last negative, and then you're out of that protocol. Because right now, we still have, we could say one through five, and there's in the plan, it says, okay, then there's this day five through seven option, so we just thought it'd be cleaner if anybody wants to do that, and I was surprised at the number of kids that did take that option, you know, that, you could see them going back and forth down there, and, you know, I communicate, we all communicate with the school nurse, and she tells us, you know, it was what it was, positive or negative, and then for that day, then they're out of that protocol, and they come the next day and do it again, and they're out of that protocol. And then by day eight, done. Now, we have to monitor symptoms, because that's what the plan says, for sure, but for the most part, I think that's been a really good option.
Do we have unlimited supply?
Yes and no.
Can we just get it from the state?
Yeah, I called the Department of Ed two days ago, we're running low on the buy next cards, but they should be here tomorrow, so I got two more cases of those coming, the Codell Quick View, I have a whole nother case of those, which I think there's 90 in the case, there's two tests in every kid, so, but they told me that they would be able to get me that if necessary as well. So, so far, so good on the supply front, at least for the schools.
And are we sending kids home?
For?
Kids to test at home?
Oh, the kids at home, we did in a couple scenarios prior to the Thanksgiving break that, but we recorded the result of that, because we told the state of South Dakota or the Department of Health that we are gonna hang on to that, we were not handing that out for parents to do that at home, just because of the integrity aspect of things, the nurses felt that they would rather do it here, but we sent, I think we sent one kid home over that holiday break, and it was one individual that had basketball practice, to ensure, and it was like her last day, she took the one test negative, and then she was out of the protocol at that point in time, so, so that was the rationale behind that.
Can you back up and explain that again, surprisingly, I don't have that plan memorized, but the way I took it, you said, if they test every day and they only test for five days?
I think maybe the best way to explain, and sorry, Mr. McInnes, is if they test in the morning, they can remove their masks, if they don't test in the morning, they can't.
Yep.
You, the protocol says after day seven, so on day eight, if you tested negative between days five and day seven, then you can remove your mask, if it's negative, so.
One test or every day?
One test, they can test on day six, take their mask off, on day seven, they wear their mask, on day eight, they could take it off if they needed to.
Okay.
So that, that's basically how that general policy works, I don't know where they come up with those numbers or anything, but...
So what are you asking them to change?
But they can also...
So, go ahead, Vinzie.
There's a second part of that though, correct, that they can test daily, and if they're negative in the morning, they can take their mask off.
Exactly.
But I don't know if it's changing, Mr. Leisner, as much as it is, is we wanted you guys to understand the clarification, that if a kid did it days one through seven, it's, the end result is still the same, because day eight, it can come up. So, it seems to be a little bit confusing, because some of our patrons have asked, well, I don't understand why you can test days through one through five, and then what's five through seven got to do with it? So, essentially, bottom line is, is you don't wanna wear the mask, we're providing the testing option, and it all accumulates or culminates into negative test on day seven, day eight, you're done, so. Because I probably still...
Well, I think that's how I was seeing it.
Yeah, 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 okay.
I know, you, you said something about the nurse wanted to test, you know, to test at school, not sending those kids at home?
Yes.
But, so how does this patron or parent let them know that? You know, because they're, do they just show up at school, and then we initiate, because the kid's not feeling well, or what? How's that work?
Yeah, so we've done it, there's probably a handful of ways that we've done that, so parents either call in, either get ahold of administration first, that can you test my kid, or we'll get ahold of the parent, we'll contact them, whether it's text message, email, whatever, hey, Johnny's here, yep, I told him, come in and test, that means we do that, and then we have to fill out the form, you know, on every kid that we test, and then we have to cite on there via telephone, via text, or whatever, which we're allowed to do by Department of Health standards, to acknowledge the fact that the kid is, has, we have parent permission to test their child. So, if you don't know anything about Braden coming in, and he just can't do that, because I'm gonna say, well, is mom or dad known, he's like, no, well, then I can't help you, you know, so.
If they haven't been feeling well, Mr. Rooney, it would be, we would set up something in the parking lot, we've done that a couple times, where the nurse would go out there into the parking lot, so that if we have a sick child, they don't have to come into the school to be, because there's been, last couple mornings, been some lines there, and so we don't wanna...
And we've done, we did that, well, I think we've done probably every day, the parent has called and the nurse...
And they kind of schedule that with us, and we just work through the nurse and get that coordinated.
But we want them to self-monitor and check in with us, so that they can get those tests, right? Not just send the kids to school, and then we decide whether or not to do it. No, okay. And some of it is, we're not calling them every day, so let's say there's, then there's been the couples in the one through five, you know, day protocol, and in the initial conversation, what is your intent? I want him tested every day, I mean, so we don't have to circle back every day, he just comes down every day, or she comes down every day, and negative, yep, okay, get going back to class, so.
Anything else?
Well, there's a couple things, I think, just have to be said here tonight, just to, at least in my opinion, and I'm not trying to speak for the board here, but the reason for this meeting tonight is, is that the community wanted us to make sure that we communicated the situation here, and if we got above certain standards, that that was clicking, that that means that we might take action. And so, we wanted to get in front of the community tonight, and let them know that we got above that at this point in time, but with the, I mean, I don't disagree with what Mr. McInnes is saying and our principles, that to me, the trend is the important thing here, and it looks like we're on it, and it looks like we're actually lowering it, so, so that's my comfort zone, is that whatever the combination of things are working, it's working for the moment, and I want the health of the community, I want the health of the school, I want to keep the kids in school, and I'm sure everybody else does, and so, so that's where I think I'm at, that's why the meeting's tonight, we've gotten information every day, ever since this thing has started, and certainly it's on the website on our school, and so, so that's the reason of the meeting, to keep people informed, and if, if we have an uptick, I'm sure we're gonna have another one here, okay?
We just wanted to be sure that we were taking every step that we could before implementing a mandate or closing the school, or having to change, make big, big changes, we don't wanna do that, so kind of being preventative and precautionary instead of reactive, so.
And I appreciate the school, the administration, and what they've done, because they, I think they've nipped it here for the moment.
The only thing I'd say is, it's not perfect, and we've made some mistakes along the way, and that's been pointed out to us, which I get, I understand it, and like you said, we're doing the best we can, we're still ebbing and flowing, and we're learning, and we're trying to fix the mistakes, you know, as we recognize them. Certainly, we've never done anything intentionally to forget this aspect, or forget that portion of it, you know, but, and it's okay for people to say, hey, what about this, we have no problem with that, because, you know, we get knee-deep in it sometimes, you're like, oh geez, yeah, you know, we need to address that or do a better job at that, so that's, that's the only thing I got to say about that concept, is we're working hard, and the overall staff, the thermometer there for those people, just visiting with them, you know, it's been along 20-plus or close to 24 months now, I mean, about 20, you know, in 1920, and, yeah, they're tired, but, you know, it's more work on them from the kids that are at home, that are trying to learn from home, that are in positive, or choose to stay home because they're close contacts, which that's an option as well, and we have some doing that, and that's totally respectable. But overall, they understand, they get it, and I can't say enough about the teachers and the kids, and Mr. Norton and Mr. Fisher could probably speak more to that, but I, I haven't had one issue with one kid or a teacher being obstinate, defiant, narrow-minded, you say, hey, you're a close contact, you gotta wear that mask, and they're like, yeah, I get it, okay, and they do it. I mean, it's not like they're running around the corner then and saying, you know, thumbing their nose at ya. I mean, they've been really, really solid about it, I think, I don't know, Eric or Adam.
Yeah, and I've been impressed with that part of it, and, you know, I really wanna say the nurses have been a godsend for us, they've done a fabulous job of keeping us informed, and just, you know, it all started in a flood, and boy, those first few days, they just, and they still, I mean, we can go down there, they know, it's, they've done a great job, so, I wanna make sure everybody hears that too, I truly appreciate what those nurses have done, as well as everybody else, and, yeah, the students understand, hey, we'd rather put them on if I'm a close contact and deal with it now than have, have everybody do it, so, you tell them, and, yep, not a problem, and so, I haven't had any issues either.
Same with the elementary, I mean, I think everybody wants the kids safe, they want staffs safe, and they're doing everything they can to do that, to be respectful of everybody, and it's everybody working together to make that happen, so, yeah, it's real testament to the teachers and the kids on that end, for sure.
Okay, all right, well, open it up to public commentary, if anybody has feedback.
Why is the elementary wearing masks outside for recess? We didn't do that last year that I know of.
We just made an adjustment to that this afternoon, so we're no longer gonna be doing that.
Okay.
Anything else?
My daughter, she was in the second grade class, she's home for 10 days, we brought her home for 10 days to swim through the mask thing, we never had a virtual classroom today, we just had a 30-minute deal over noon and hi, and it worked, and that was it.
Yep, we're working on getting that going, it probably won't be a full eight hours of virtual, it will be kind of check-ins like that.
Well, it will be.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought maybe it'd be more, she'd be involved in class, I hear the teacher talk when she taught, I guess I didn't know.
Yeah, there'll be some mix of that, it's gonna kind of depend on each day, we're working on getting the swivel up and operating, that isn't something that they had out, so they're getting that out, getting that connected, but it will still be kind of that interactive check-ins, there might be sometimes when it's a more interactive lesson where it can be a part of all of that, sometimes it might be a recording of kind of a lecture on the day, so it'll be kind of a mix of all of those things, all right?
How do they find that out, like when do they find that out for the day?
Communication through the teacher, is sending out schedules, so like we're getting that all developed, I mean, as, as quickly as we can.
That's some of those things that... And I don't think she likes riding with the feedlot tractor too much, she wasn't digging that today.
And that's part of too, I wanna be, I talked with our staff this morning, and I did talk with them about, to me, when, when you're at home, it's gonna be a little different, I want my staff to really focus on the things that are absolutely essential, so there might be sometimes when you're in a classroom, I don't wanna say it's unnecessary, but you might be doing some, some filler-type stuff to kind of build up to things, and so I think when they're at home, keeping in mind that, you know, parents are working and doing different things, they can't necessarily all sit with their kid for eight hours, that, you know, it's gonna be a little bit different, they might not have every single assignment the exact way, but the important, really, the meat and potatoes of that lesson is gonna be there, some of the other, what I would call kind of the fluffy-type stuff, that might not be there, which I don't really want it to be, because I want them to be able to really focus and dive into that, and not be overwhelmed, you know, because if you're at home for whatever reason, the last thing I want is someone to be overwhelmed, and then just, I don't wanna do this anymore, you know, and so, I'm really focusing on that connection over content, that the kids still feel connected to their peers, to their teachers, and that's gonna look and feel different for everybody, but that was, we had a staff meeting this morning, and that was kind of the gist of what I shared with them this morning, so.
Fair enough, thank you.
I'm just wondering, well, first, thank you guys, because this is great, I'm wondering what the testing looks like and how early you start testing, because my daughter's in one of the classes, and she would rather get tested than wear a mask, which I support, but she missed the first 45 minutes of class, even though she was down there earlier than, before school started, so I'm just wondering how early you start testing, because I got another one in a different section, that would rather die than ever be tested, so he will just wear a mask, but just wondering what that looks like, and if that could be communicated more clearly to parents, as to, you know, how early can they come in and be tested to keep the disruptions in the classroom to a minimum, so there's not a trickle of kids coming through the door for the first hour?
As of right now, the nursing corps, I'll call them... As of right now, the nursing corps, I'll call them, are, the door is open by 7:50. So, and I know that does cut into instructional time. You know, that gives us, I would say probably 45 minutes, you know, by the time the kids, the 8:15 bell rings, we can settle down and get going. And also 8:30, we, 8:25, we got instruction really starting to get going in those classrooms. So again, that's something that's not perfect. There is a little bit of overtime and it's kind of come first served, first served, first come, first served. And it's, if anybody's been really, really stressed on this whole deal, it's those three ladies, because they're getting inundated. I'm used to that protocol, you guys probably heard me say that. Where I came from, there was no nurse, it was me. I was the one that was doing all the testing. So I'm trying to help them as much as I can and, you know, make sure kids are in the right spot and you wait here, we're doing this and I can do that for you and type of deal. So I certainly agree that we want to get kids back to the classroom as soon as possible and it's not perfect, but I can have a conversation with those ladies, because we're on contract, Craig helped me out here, I mean, with Avera, right? As far as the amount of time. But maybe there's situations there where we get in this type of deal, you know, even though we're maybe on the downhill slide here, I think we're on the downhill slide and feel comfortable saying that. In those times of heavier need, well, can we show up at 7:30? You know, it's a good point.
And my daughter's a little OCD, so she had a bigger issue missing the first 45 minutes of class than she did with getting tested.
That's really pretty good.
Honestly, she's at on her phone and she's like, is it done yet? Is it done yet? I just, like, that bothered her more than being tested.
So yeah, so what it looks like, you're exactly right. If we test them, we send them back. I mean, so we'll send them back in a mask and then we will, we will follow, we will go get them, we will follow them up, unless we have really, you can kind of tell, honestly. I mean, there hasn't been a whole lot of kids that, I call them typhoid Mary, where like, you feel fine, you look good and then all of a sudden, you know, geez, what is that? I mean, most of them are like, eh, you can kind of get that indication that something's going on. So, and we try to hang on to those kids. So yeah, I mean, it's something we can do, we can do better at, so.
How long does a test take? So if they take it long before it's.
So the Binex card is after you do the process, you swab and then you put it in the antigen, you have to wait 15 minutes on that deal. And then the Codell Quick View one is 10 minutes. So that's got one more step involved in it, where I have to do the swab and then I have to put the swab in the vial and then I take it out and then put the test strip in the vial, where the Binex is swab, put it in the card, add the antigen and then it tells you. I can tell you the Binex and it's no different here. If you are shedding, if the viral load is there, 60 seconds, that thing is going to pop. And it says wait 15, which we do, but as soon as the pink line and the blue line appear, that happens in sometimes 30 seconds, we know. So we take care of that situation and call parents and, you know, get their stuff and you got to go home, so. But I think that answered, answered your question.
If, if we do the 10 days at home, are we allowed to come in on the seventh day?
Absolutely.
Get a test, if it's negative, we can come back without a mask?
Absolutely. Yup. We would encourage that. We want your kids here. Yup. And we understand your necessity or your desire to do that, but if that's, yup, day seven, come in, boom. And then negative, act tomorrow. Or rest of that day seven, wear that mask for that day or come back on day eight.
Anything else? All right. We will adjourn.
You need a motion for that, Craig?
Some of.
Any other discussion? And then I'll say that. Close, save side, that's okay.
Any material, guys, that you don't want, I'll take it, if you want to keep it, that's fine too.